Just a quick reminder that this isn't a regular select board meeting, so we're going to be running it the same way we would any other select board meeting. We have just a very, very brief couple of administrative items we need to take care of via a consent agenda. So the consent agenda this evening, there are two items. One is, we inadvertently left Patrick, the library director, off of the list for the library building committee, so we need to formally appoint him. And Marleau has requested that Chapter 90 be for the pavement management study approved this evening as well.
Second?
We'll do second, if I'm in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. That was it. So first, I just want to welcome the Legion members. The reason we're having the meeting this evening is that shortly after a planning board meeting back in February, where some of the Legion members went before the planning board to express their concern about the potential for harm being caused to their organization by the placement of the new senior community center, we did talk after that meeting and we suggested that perhaps it would be a good idea for the Legion members to be able to come in front of the select board directly and vocalize their concerns. So that's the primary focus of tonight's meeting, is really the only agenda item this evening. So, just a couple of things up front, just a larger group than normal select board, so we just want to get a couple of things across. First would be rules of engagement. We do expect people who are speaking tonight to speak at the microphone because of the home viewing audience. Unfortunately, when you don't come to the microphone, a lot of the back and forth is completely lost, so, sorry, maybe a little bit cumbersome, but hopefully these microphones can pick up the questions and comments, but that's what we're going to ask you to do. Hopefully, people can be articulate and get their point across without going on too long. We'll just kind of have to take that under advisement if in fact some people are speaking too long, we may need to put some sort of a time limit in place. I hope not, but just let you know that that could happen. We do expect everyone to be respectful. Age always has its privileges, but this is a time where that's going to come into play, so we expect every individual who speaks tonight to speak respectfully. And if that doesn't happen again, we'll deal with it as we need to. So, again, the primary focus, just to reiterate, is we're here tonight as a select board to listen to the members of the Legion and their concerns. To the extent there are statements made or questions asked that we can quickly answer and resolve, we'll do that, but there may be some things that come up that we just need to take under advisement tonight. So, again, we'll try to make it as productive a meeting as possible, but we're expecting there may be some follow-up work to do. Okay, so with that said, just a little bit of background, because like many things in Havy, people don't know anything about it until it's hidden in the newspaper, they're starting to hear more about it, so we just wanted to give a quick background. So I already talked about the fact that the Legion approached the select board to ask for an audience. The select board members collectively have indicated that our goal is hopefully to find some sort of common ground. Again, it's all one town, and we know that we have different groups representing their own interests, but we have to look out for the interests of the entire town. And then, so just a really brief history of how we got here. So first and foremost, why did we have a senior community center building project at all? And so for those of you who haven't been in town forever, this actually dates back to the 1980s. The idea of having senior, improving senior services dates back to conversations that took place 70 decades ago. And there were sort of community action states that were put in supporting that. So 1998 is actually when the Booker School was converted to the senior center and made available for our uses. In 2004, there was a long-range planning meeting, and that long-range plan dated back then talked about the idea of cohesive town centers, investment-friendly infrastructure, architectural synergy, and attractive facilities. A place where you could shop, participate in special town events, enjoy town facilities, or simply walk in your laps. In 2005, that master plan was actually published, and this was all commissioned by our planning board, of course. Then in October, town meeting, that fall town meeting, that master plan was adopted. Fast forward to 2013, the facilities plan for municipal buildings was published, and that was a study commissioned by the select board. The senior center was reviewed, and numerous deficiencies were discussed at that time. In August of 2015, there was a community survey on revised master plan that was posted on the planning board website. In October of 2016, a year later, there was a public forum at a special town meeting at that time, which was televised, and a petition article to raise money for the senior center was included in that presentation. Special town meeting then voted, October 27th of that year, to raise 5.3 million for a senior center. In January, that amount was approved as a debt solution for the senior center by the voters. And then, in May of 2017, a public forum opposed senior center was held, and that included plans and a discussion of the proposed ability of this location. There were a series of questions and answers about the parking lot, there were some American Legion members present at that meeting. And then in June of 2017, the master plan update was published, again commissioned by the planning board, and the town center with senior center was identified as a critical part of the community, and strategies restricted to the town center were presented at that time. In September, there was a public forum held for the October 5th special town meeting, at which point additional money for the senior center project was presented as a request. October 5th special town meeting, 1.8 million for the senior center was voted, and then on November 14th, voters again approved the debt solution to add those monies for the senior center. And just so you're aware, I'm sure most of you don't spend your Wednesday evenings watching our meetings, but every select board agenda during calendar year 2017, from the time these projects were approved, has included an update on the senior center project. And those meetings were televised up into the public and available on iHave Media, I gather it's safe. So, the senior center project currently is being managed by the Council on Aging with extensive involvement from the seniors, and again, there's a formal building committee that is appointed for both the senior center project as well as the library project. So, that goes along. So just letting everybody else, kind of trying to bring you forward to where we are tonight. So again, this conversation with the Legion folks was really kind of kicked off, I think it was the first week of February, that was at that planning board meeting. So we're just now meeting, and again, our goal is to listen to the Legion members and listen to what you have to say about your concerns about the project. So, at this time, anything else select board members want to add?
Yes, very much.
Okay. So at this time, what any of the members of the Legion would like to say? Rich, if you don't mind, just again, the folks at home, just say who you are.
Thank you.
Rich Whitworth, David Simpson, Wayne, Commander of Legion. About this meeting back in May 25th, who exactly did you meet with? What members of the Legion?
Are you talking about a public forum?
Yes. Who was there from the Legion?
I believe Thomas Stilarski, is that right? And Stanley Duh? And so there were people in the audience asking questions, so I only viewed the...
So it was never really an E-Board meeting or nothing like that?
No, it was a public forum. It was just a public forum.
Okay, all right.
And feel free to just, you know, if we've got some things to say.
First of all, I need to comment, so did any board of select one ever question what the hardship would be for the parking at the American Legion? We have the capacity to hold 380 people upstairs, 200 people downstairs. We have an annual monthly supper with roughly 90 people. This past Wednesday, we had a barbecue dinner, and trust me, every parking place above was filled up. The second question I have too is, during the construction, when they start this, are they going to just fence it off and leave us like the last time with no place to park? I'd like to reply on those two questions.
David, I think we talked about the construction. Do you want to address that? The, uh, the, those kind of works or the construction, can you address this?
I'm not sure that I've got a clear idea of the sequence of construction that the senior center is proposing here. So at this time, I think that we should acknowledge this as a concern of the American Legion and that we should talk with the building subcommittee and find out if there are ways that we can accommodate. So that's a long way to say it, because I don't have a direct answer.
And then in terms of the first question that you asked, Frank, about select board member consideration for the Legion, whether or not anybody specifically asked about it?
We're just concerned where they would park.
Above the parking? So the way that we've been running these building projects is there is a select board member on each of the committees, and Jerry's been participating in many of those committees. I believe that Jerry indicated that you were aware that there was a concern about the parking, and it did come up at a couple of meetings. Were there other meetings other than the ones that I talked about that took place with any Legion members present? Hi, Tim.
I'm Tim Nyark, building commissioner. I did, I was asked to participate in a meeting, oh, I think it was last week at some point, and that was a big concern that was brought up by myself as a building official, and also by the Municipal Building Committee. And we did discuss that directly with the architect, telling him that there was a huge concern in regards to how this phase would happen, to make sure that there's, that the least amount of interruption could happen with the American Legion site. And that hasn't been finalized, but we did talk about some scenarios with regard to possibly getting the, I'll say, the south side of the central parking taken care of first, getting it prepped in such a way that people can park there, and then just using the north side of the entire lot for construction and all the equipment. We were very concerned, Municipal Building Committee and myself particularly, and the fire chief, to make sure that the site was usable for everybody. Do we have a final synopsis of that? No. But they all felt at that time that something could be done so we could make sure that there was adequate parking. Maybe not precisely where it is now, but to the west a little bit, and on the, again, on the south side of that central parking area. So we will have something for you, that's for sure. And we definitely have to make sure that that is done, because we are all going to the American Legion to the suburbs, and it is a good thing to happen. So, we'll keep you abreast of how that's going, finalized.
Do you want to mention the construction? Is there any going through Middle Street?
What Suzanne wanted me to bring up is, again, all the construction will be on the north side of the town property, will not go through the parking area from Route 9 at all. We have so stated that is only for emergency, it's very specific that because of the amount of traffic that's on Route 9, they should not be entering or exiting there, and it will primarily be and only be on Middle Street.
The one piece that we had gotten the contractors in, already in the documents that we have started to prepare, is that you all know that there's the 30-foot right-of-way that the town has through your lot. We have required that any work bringing utilities through that, at the end of every day, leave the lot in a usable condition. It will not have any effect on you after the end of the workday.
Okay, so again, so just in the spirit of support, I think what we're hearing so far is clearly you have a concern about your access to the number of parking places and where those parking places will be located, you know, given the types of events that you hold periodically at the Legion. And I think maybe just going back to that select board comment, again, there's so much going on, we tried to delegate and have a communication plan in place, which we thought should be effective enough. And I think, you know, as I stated at the night at that planning board meeting, I can unquestionably say that there's nobody up here on the select board that, you know, wants any harm to come to the Legion. We've always looked at the Legion as, you know, part of the community. It's not town-owned, but it is part of the community, so certainly throughout this process, the idea is to get people to work together cooperatively to figure this out. So, as Tim stated, this is a work in progress, this is part of the process now, is just making sure we have identified exactly what your issues are. So, again, I'm hearing loud and clear that this construction plan is critically important to you, because never do you want to have a situation where your operations are shut down or diminished because of the activity going on on the adjacent lot. Anything else from the Legion members? Sure. Joyce?
I think we were all a little bit surprised when the size of the senior center got voted on and it moved from one size to another size. I myself was not aware of the positioning of the senior center, because I'm not able to go to any of the meetings during the day, as a lot of people aren't. And I didn't know until Jane, probably a month ago, showed me the actual plans of where it was going to go, and it was going to be into the parking area. So I probably was just as surprised as you were that this was going to happen. But in the spirit of things of them moving forward with their project, I certainly want us all to work together. And I support the Legion wholeheartedly, I always have, and I appreciate your support to me all these years, and certainly want to carry that through to making sure that you're taken care of in the proper way. We will work with everybody to make sure that there is proper parking for everybody to use. So I'm hoping that everybody can just work together, and we'll do things. I don't think anything was done intentionally to harm the Legion. You're the center of our area there on Route 9, and we want to make sure that you're taken care of, it's important.
John, do you want to speak? Now, are you, here's a planning board member, or resident, or how are you?
I'll let you want to take it.
Well...
Yeah, John Michkowski, for San Diego Drive. Before I got into this meeting, I watched YouTube, where the forum was held, October 19th, when members of the senior center building committee made their presentation, I made a presentation for the fire substation. At that time, Don picked up at the mic and talked, he said, "The OPM told them that this was going to cost a $7.1 million project, and yet they still were adamant about going with a 5.3." They knew, prior to that meeting, that that building was going to cost $7.1 million. And they purposely picked out a figure out of the sky, because I can't figure out where they got that figure, and nobody can. And they come out and did that, just what I suspect, to get the two-thirds vote, all right? I think it was wrong. I think what the selectmen did with the construction period of the upper parking lot, and yet you tell these people there's going to be no disruption? They lost thousands of dollars here when you leased out that upper lot for construction. And you do the same thing here. And in the construction, they got a plan on the whole thing, and you do that before construction even starts. You just don't start construction, then say, "Oh, guys, we're going to shut down your parking lot," and that's what you did with the construction of Route 9. You basically shut down their parking, and you guys are going to do it again. You guys keep doing it and doing it. When is all this stuff going to stop? And when are we going to start just being honest with the people and tell them the truth? Like, on October 27th meeting, the truth was never said. It was misled, that committee got zero for a budget, and so didn't we get zero for a budget? All right? How could they get an estimate on anything to do with that site? And there was nothing, nothing ever said prior to that vote on where that building was going to stand. And even after your last forum, I asked, "What is the safety reason of a building sitting in that position versus sitting in the other position?" There was nothing from the fire chief, there was nothing from the police chief. So it wasn't them who did it, and I still, to this day, don't know who did it. I suspect it was the chairman of the building committee that put that plan together, I don't know. But I certainly would like to find out why that building is safe there, but not safe on the other foot.
So let's talk about the process again. So, allowing Mr. Michkowski to speak, but in terms of the process, the, what has to happen is that the, any town building project, the senior center, senior community center building project, as well as the library building project, need to go for site plan approval in front of the planning board. The committees are put together with the intent that between the outside project manager and architects and whatever, that they will take all of the needs. You know, so obviously they started in terms of determining the size of the building, it was a, kind of what their programming requirements were that dictated the layout ultimately, the size of that building. So, again, there's been a group of very dedicated people working on that. I don't have any intention tonight of discussing motivations and who's being truthful, who's not, and all of that, and it's not productive in any way, nor is it fair or appropriate to the volunteers of this town. So I think what is relevant, though, is to the extent there are parties who feel that the current plan is not suitable and is adversely impacting you. Again, we want to take that into account, and we're very hopeful that we can find a resolution. So what I've heard so far tonight in terms of the American Legion, again, is a concern about adequacy of the parking, the location of the parking, and any interruption to your normal operations. Because again, I think everybody here enjoys it. Very clearly, we want to make sure that we can accommodate. That said, there are other needs in the town as well. We have overwhelming support for both the new library and the senior center, not to mention the master plan that it fits into, so we need to be very respectful of all of the voters in Havy who've already voiced their opinion. So we're doing the best we can to carry forward the will of the voter here. So, can I just ask, are there other specific issues to the Legion that you want to make sure that we're taking into account? Jerry, do you have?
I have one, and I'd like to make sure it gets taken care of the best of our ability here. And that's I want to memorialize that our decision tonight and our decision to go forward is always respected regardless of who sits in the select board seat. And I would think that that would be a very important aspect to you. We sat up here and we told you that you would be able to utilize the parking lot at the senior center. It's going to be a lit parking lot, it's going to have a nice walkway down to it. But I would think that it'd be imperative to you guys to make sure that we, in some way, memorialize and make sure that this goes on and is in perpetuity. So I don't know how we need to do that, David, or what we need to do to take a vote, or when we should be taking this vote, but I think it's imperative that we get that done.
Do you have any thoughts on that? Just in terms of building a process like that?
So certainly, there could be a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement whereby the Legion is allowed to use parking, public parking at the site of the senior center, library, and all that. So that's something that we can start working on, and once we sign it, it'll be good for as long as there is a [inaudible].
Jerry, thanks for the suggestion. Just, John, you have anything you want to, would you be willing to enter into some sort of agreement with the Legion relative to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, how does the Legion feel? Is that something you want to help?
I don't know if the rest of the board apologized to all Legioners for the bad job we did in coordinating the Route 9 project, but on behalf of myself, for sure, it was an absolute disgrace what we did and how we ran that Route 9 job, and what the state really did to us for not finishing and maintaining or retaining that parking lot for you guys. Never mind the business that you did lose while they were in and out of that place. So, the parking, I don't know, there's probably roughly 35 to 45 cars in that upper lot on any one night when you guys got a big shindig going on over there. So if we put 100 parking places in, yes, it's going to be about another 60 or 80 feet to walk, but we're going from 30 to 45 parking places to over 100. And if we get an agreement that you guys can use it anytime you want, I think that's about as fair as we can be at this point, you know?
Thanks, John. And just a point of clarification, I think that, you know, in terms of apologizing about the DOT project, I do want to be careful just because there were some, again, hardworking municipal employees involved in negotiating that. Sometimes things don't go according to Hoyle, not to disparage the Department of Transportation either, but working with the state is not always as simple as one might think, especially for former state employees that are in the room, they may or may not agree with that statement. But I, there was no mountain to tent, so I just want to be clear on that. But yes, we're very clear after the fact that there was some disruption caused to you, and again, we don't, we try to learn from mistakes of the past and make sure it doesn't happen again, and we're certainly trying to show that tonight.
That's a Daniel [unintelligible]. Regarding the parking at any time, at the last meeting when we were here, Suzanne said she'd make a calendar, and we'd do various dates. That doesn't work when we have a funeral, that doesn't work when we have bikers against child abuse. We need a lot of spaces at various times. We cannot schedule a funeral. Bikers Against Child Abuse went all the way back to Middle Street. We have pictures of how many people were there. This is a community event for everybody, especially the children. Everyone here in this room has used a Legion at one time or another. We need more parking spaces. And Jerry, you're right, we can park up there, absolutely. We also have people with walkers, we have people with wheelchairs. It's not conducive for the Legion members at times, not always, to be way out there. I understand it's a long walk, I get that. We have many people that have physical disabilities that need to be closer to our building than that.
So, again, just adding to the list of concerns, again, a reiteration that you're concerned about the adequacy of the parking, and also the proximity of the parking, and then whether or not we're trying to work on a cooperative schedule with the municipal buildings that are going to be put there. buildings that are going to be put there, would it be conducive? Obviously, if there's a funeral, you're only going to know a few days in advance that there's a funeral occurring. So again, we'll, we'll keep that conversation going and see how we can make that work for everybody. One thing, regarding the disabilities, I mean, and you're right, I think everybody in this room has probably been in the Legion, and I'm, I'm not exactly aware that the Legion is compliant for people with disabilities. You know, there's no elevator or whatever, but I think what Jerry was alluding to is we were hopeful that to help with that situation, if in fact, the Legion parking area can be improved, that it would enable the Legion to designate handicap spaces and spaces close to the building, so that folks with walkers or who might have difficulty navigating would get those spaces, and people who were more able-bodied could then use the, the spillover parking up above. So I think that's something that we definitely want to take into account. So is this the list? Not saying it's instrumental, it's not critical items, but just want to make sure we have everything. Yeah, oh, that's a good point. Jerry was just suggesting that, you know, some people, again, may be kind of coming to this for the, for the first time, or are reluctant to get up to the microphone in a meeting like this. So if there are other, other issues that weren't articulated tonight that you think need to make that critical needs list, we could ask that they be submitted, and if you want to send it directly to David Nixon's office, that would, that would work, just so they're not worried about, you know, getting lost or whatever, and that David would make sure it would get to the folks who are working on the project, on the senior and community center building committee to address. Is this a question, or?
This is a question.
Clarification on construction of the parking lot. That wasn't written out to the DOT, that was written out to a private contractor that used it, that did the construction on Route 9, is that correct?
So that's a question?
It's not our contractor, ETNL, sorry, on the DOT.
Okay, so, yeah, so ETNL was the project manager, so they were the ones who...
Then why didn't you have them clean the mess they made here when they left? They were responsible for doing the damage in the Legion parking lot and the upper parking lot. And the select board should have made them repay that whole lot, it's not too late. They damaged it, let them fix it.
So the Route 9 parking project was a project that was run by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, it was never our project. We piggybacked onto their project in order to replace water and sewer lines underneath the, water line is sorry, sewer, water lines underneath Route 9. ETNL was the general contractor for that project, they were never our contractor, they were the Department of Transportation's contractor. We had problems with ETNL, they started out well, but then towards the end of the project, they became more difficult to work with, and I understand that they did damage to your parking lot. They also decided to, on our side, they decided to pay for Route 9, the final topco, right on election day, 2016. So I was actually on the phone trying to get a court order to shut them down when they finished the project. So it was not a good relationship between the town and ETNL, so we had to deal with version 1 as well. We are exploring ways of raising funds for parking, be happy to talk about that later.
So I just want to go back to that memorandum of understanding. It sounds like the current select board is more than willing to enter into some sort of memorialization of that agreement, so I guess I'd ask, I don't know if, versus Strickland, if we should use Ridwick, oh, they are, use you as the point of contact for that, or you and Frank, or how would you like to? I mean, is that something that you would be interested in doing before we have a changeover on the select board?
I'm going, yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, so we'll, we'll task David with working, drafting something like that, and then...
No, I'm going in, okay. Is that like to speak?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Stan, it'll take you two weeks, haste, waste, and secrecy. According to the paramountal procedure, a non-resident or property taxpayer can be assigned to endure expense to the town. About two years ago, shown on the HAVI TV, the, the select board gave the director assignment to have a new senior center building. With new form plan and likes or, or no likes, she's building to have a burn constructed on the Legion parking lot, plus directing heavy service trucks to use the Legion lot instead, instead of using the hooker school entrance. Why is the Legion involved in this anyhow? I hope the new library will read proper footage for heavy equipment to pass. Somebody's going to get seriously hurt by trying to enter or exit to, onto Route 9. The proposal is to be built to have 15-hour jack on the auto wall, which would be attached in small pieces, resulting in a weaker structure, more expensive, and continuous repair. With no building lots available here in HAVI, it seems as though you should look at the campus center at UMass Amherst or Chicken Feet, one-story library, but a useful full fledged, used basement. And then we add the useless extended attic in the proposed project. If you want a high building, why not build a second story instead of that stupid extended attic? Last month, a planning board member asked if they could reserve a room at the center. No reply. This is a community building paid for by the heavy property taxpayers. The planning board and others, and they should have a site there if possible. With the select board assuming responsibility to this great misunderstanding, I ask, I beg the select board to delay this project temporarily. Replace Susan as the bully, she is a non-resident.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, we have to stop right there, that, that did cross a line, and I, when I'm going to listen to that sort of, so, so let me summarize what you said up until that point. You're indicating that there's a concern about heavy equipment and the safety, concern with heavy equipment potentially moving in and out of that lot? So we, I'm adding that to the list, okay? And then just to address the, the use of the building, one of the things that hasn't been necessarily obvious to people, and I, I think maybe we need to do a better job talking about it, is it is the purview of the, of the select board, remember which board I'm talking about? It's the purview of the select board to determine building usage for town-owned buildings. So we are already starting the conversations in anticipation of these building projects to determine what sort of swing space will be needed for the various departments, including the planning board, including HAVI Media. So we're going to be addressing that sooner rather than later, because there's a lot of concern about that, and I think we already have some excellent ideas. Municipal Building Committee is helping with that process as well. And again, you know, it is the purview of the select board to determine the building usage. That said, the library is a library, the senior community center, those are the primary purposes. But the senior community center folks have already been working cooperatively with HAVI Media to work on them at least having some temporary space there. So again, nothing, no personal comments will, will be allowed. So is there anything else that you want to say that has nothing to do with individuals?
Let's just start off with a public forum. We're going to start somewhere, because whatever has been done is all and waste.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, anything else? Anything else that you want to make sure that we hear loud and clear? And then I think we should also, select board, to talk about kind of where we go from here, that we've had some of the feedback tonight. Okay? So if not... So we are meeting next Wednesday, April 4th, that's our next regularly scheduled select board meeting. So we will take these comments and concerns under advisement, and we will make sure that we have a plan in place to ensure that they're addressed as part of this building project going forward, okay? So I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. I'm sorry, sometimes it's a good, good Donnybrook fight that drives people out to the, the meetings, but HAVI, HAVI always seems to prevail and figure out a way to make it work, because again, we're all neighbors. And I think that point was made by a couple of people tonight. We need to make sure that everyone's needs are met as we spend the precious little dollars we have on these projects. So I'm looking forward to that, I'm looking forward to the master plan being moved along and carried out, and I'm certainly looking forward to the resolution of the Legion to make sure that everybody's satisfied with the, the outcome on this. It's not going to be easy, but we'll get it. All right, so if that's it, then is there a motion Twitter? Motion made in second, all on paper. All right, goodnight, everybody.